Well, board and the first order of business is a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Nate, second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Jessica?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public comment, is there any public comment? Alright, seeing none, we will move on to the new business and I'm gonna turn that over um to Chris.
Alright, thanks Lisa. Uh I thank you all for giving up another evening here. I know that uh when I was speaking with Lisa about uh graduation, there are a couple concerns uh particularly around funding that some of the building principals had uh brought to our attention just with, you know, that we had kind of put a moratorium on fundraisers for the year and as we're looking at potential of end of year dances or proms and typically junior classes would hold them, uh you know, Lisa had said that would be a discussion obviously for the board if we were gonna look at uh additional funding and then as we uh look to build out a schedule, I thought it might be a good time to just kind of review some of the guidance that we received from the A O E as well as the Department of Health that kind of, you know, gives us the parameters from which we work when we build out these plans. And uh so I have I have ten short slides I'll share with you in just a second. And after that, we want we can obviously answer questions, we can also have uh the building administrators gonna share some of their thoughts, what they're looking at doing with regard to uh their graduation uh promotion ceremonies as well as the end of year dances or proms or, you know, senior banquet sort of things along those lines. Alright, so I'll give you just a second, I'll share my screen with you. So can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So so a lot of the information you receive here tonight is taken directly from information that can be found on the A U A O E website as well as Department of Health. So this is gonna be nothing new, this is nothing that I am privy to that no one else is. This is all public information that any one of us on the call can go right to the A O E website and download this information, but I just wanted to kind of, you know, just consolidate put it here and just uh, you know, for us to kind of see it one nice neat package. So uh all G R C S U end of year gathering celebrations graduations will be held in a manner consistent with both the strong and healthy year guidance and the gatherings and events provisions of the Vermont Forward Plan. Uh that is important just for us to remember because, you know, since the beginning of the year we have been following the guidance closely as we've moved, you know, throughout the school year, we look at, you know, sports, other activities, uh that has been kind of the um, you know, the our guiding lights. And I think as we're looking at, you know, finishing the year off to go with these uh ceremony things along the lines, we're not gonna kind of lose the uh lose our direction. So we are going to follow, you know, the guidance, you know, through the end. I do know that we're also entering kind of a interesting period of the year where, you know, as we see with the uh Vermont Forward Plan, you know, we have the four steps, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Uh, you know, July fourth, you know, something magical happens, uh you know, that uh everything, I guess, goes away or gets better, but uh we are uh currently in step two. Uh and I'll kind of go through that, what that means for us. Uh and step three is more of a prominence for us.
Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
Sorry, my Siri went off. So uh so step two right now, uh we are Vermont Forward Plan. Uh as you see that there is restrictions around indoors and outdoors. This really will not impact our end of the year uh ceremonies or graduation. I know when talking with the building principals, most of our plans are uh events are will happen after uh June first. Uh the only thing I may make an impact is if uh we do a field trip or a class trip. So we need to make sure that we are following this guidance closely. So um, you know, the big thing is uh starting May first at the very bottom. Uh contact tracing logs will no longer be needed for events and gatherings. Uh there was new information that was just released today around spring sports uh which uh the building ministers just saw, which kind of focuses on this about the concert tracing logs about masks being worn at uh um, you know, spring sports or other events. Step three, this is the one that I think we're gonna focus on. Uh so all of our events will, you know, were encouraged to be held outdoors. And one of the reason why we're looking to shift to an outdoor uh ceremonies, graduations is affected, well, from a logistic standpoint, it makes things a lot less of a headache. Uh we look at right now in in our best case scenarios, one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet, up to three hundred unvaccinated people, whichever is less, plus any number of vaccinated people as universal guidance or spacing allows. As we look at some of our gyms in years past, we've had a hard time fitting enough people in there uh for our graduation as and we look at trying to decide or decipher who's vaccinated, who's unvaccinated, it's just a logistical headache. What we've decided to do with our graduations between Cora Valley is we are shifting to an outdoor graduation. Reason why we're doing outdoor graduation is you see here, we have nine hundred unvaccinated people plus any number of vaccinated individuals as universal guidance or spacing allows. Uh talking with the building principals, uh we will have more than enough space to accommodate a large number of family members, uh community members who want to come out and support our graduates. Uh the one thing we have to make sure obviously is just that we, you know, talk about this later about we just try our best to figure out who's gonna be vaccinated, unvaccinated. Uh the state has asked us to uh provide a self attestation form. Uh we're currently developing that. What it might look like, I I talked to the regional superintendents this morning about this as well. So once we have a common forum, I will release that to the uh the staff, students and to the board as well. Uh once again, all events and gatherings must follow the universal guidance uh which includes spacing requirements and mask mandates. Uh I know there's been some changes with masks, particularly with uh, you know, governor said that, you know, they're like, believe masks do not need to be worn outside anymore. Uh what we are looking at right now is our current A O E guidance which states that uh if you're, you know, mingling or with people outside of your family group or pod, uh masks need to be worn. Uh so, you know, that is as of May fourth, obviously our graduations are about a month away. If things change, we will keep you updated, we'll let you know. Uh as I said before, the guidance that we're taking a look at is strictly from the A O E and D O H. Uh this will assist us in the plan of our graduation and end of year events. So moving into our in-person graduation outdoor ceremonies. So the outdoor ceremonies are encouraged, as I said before, as long as they follow the established guidelines outline the strong and healthy year, which can be found online and the Vermont Forward Plan. G R C S U schools uh should remind participants about the public health requirements for these gatherings, including advising potential participants, those people with COVID nineteen like symptoms must stay home. Uh we are in allergy season. I know I I have terrible seasonal allergies. I it there are days I feel miserable. Uh and a lot of those uh allergy symptoms mimic those of COVID nineteen. Uh right now, we are, you know, looking at anybody who has a COVID nineteen like symptom will have to stay home. So that's just something to be aware of. Uh regardless, you say if allergies or not, that, you know, there will be ways of uh, you know, declaring that you have allergies. I know that we look at school, there's some medical notes that can be brought, whatever else, but we'll work through that uh moving forward. Uh facial coverings may be removed while delivering speeches and accepting diplomas. Uh so this is something for the graduates. We are looking uh with regard to the current guidance. If our graduates are seated at least six feet apart on the field and outdoors, they will not have to wear a mask, but that's something where I said the building principals will look at space and what we're gonna do, but if they they cannot seat the graduates, uh they have to seat the graduates closer than six feet apart, the graduates will have to wear their masks. Uh but when they go up to deliver a speech or accept diplomas, they remove their masks for pictures. Uh and as I said before, Corey Valley Schools will follow step three of the events and gatherings provision in the Vermont Forward Plan. Excuse me, participation of vaccinated individuals. Uh so it says before, but we are being asked by the state to try to draw the distinction between the participation of vaccinated and non-vaccinated individuals. Uh this is uh a problem area and it was discussed at length in in our regional superintendent's group in terms of what that looks like, how we can, how we can do this. Uh the the state right now is recommending that we should utilize some means of self attestation to determine the vaccinated status of all individuals attending end of the school year events. Uh this will impact obviously how many people we can fit or where people sit and along those lines. Uh we will have more information on that. Uh I do expect more clarity come from the state in terms of uh how best to handle this. Uh the purpose of attending a graduations uh ceremony, a student shall be deemed to be vaccinated if they received all required doses of vaccine at least two weeks prior to an event. So our seniors could be fully vaccinated by graduation. You know, like I said, it's a personal choice and we're seeing you have opt to not do, that's fine. But that obviously just way into how we handle the graduation ceremony. Shifting to proms and end of year celebrations, I know this has been a big concern with a lot of our parents and our students. Uh you know, as Governor Dan French said a while ago that proms can continue. Uh some, it wasn't a lot of guidance given to us with regards to this, but proms and other social events, once again, are permitted in accordance with the the guidelines stated in the strong and healthy year and Vermont Forward. The good news is dancing may occur at proms and end of year social events. Our participants must remain masked. And I say this where this is a change because initially we were getting word that dancing would not be allowed at at proms or end of end of year social events, but so they've uh they've changed that and say that they, you know, dancing can occur, that students can dance. Um now, dance well, that's another story, but uh but they can dance. And uh but the participants uh at the time have to remain masked. Uh it is our goal, obviously, during this time to, you know, maintain social distancing. Uh we're gonna do the best we can to ensure that. Um in order to ensure that proms in accordance with current guidance regulations, we are encouraging all proms and other social events to take place on school property. Uh it's just it's easier for us to kind of control and, you know, limit the uh the exposure and look at the guidance regulations, so we encourage it. We also know that uh realistically, some uh schools are looking at outside venues and that's something which we, as a board, we can discuss. Uh here's the universal guidance uh that everything is followed after and just encouraging people to stay home and sick, mask wearing, including while dancing prom. Uh combined with event guidance, you know, it's four and then social distancing and mask wearing. So this is really nothing new with the exception of the dancing. Um this thing, this is something we've been kind of following the whole whole year. Alright. Uh field and class trips. End of year field trips are permitted in accordance with the guidelines established under the strong and healthy year guidance. Uh out of state and overnight field trips are discouraged. Uh and then outdoor and virtual field trips are strongly referred, indoor field trips are not preferred, but a lot of students are distance on buses and in the facility and do not mix with students from other pods, schools or general public. We do not have a lot of field trips planned for the end of the year, but I do know that as we look at uh end of the year celebrations, typically, you know, a sixth grade class or eighth grade class or uh senior class would do their 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 trips. Uh this year, uh some of our advisors have are looking at the potential of doing a one day trip in state somewhere. Uh so, you know, I think our building mysteries can kind of touch upon that a little bit later in terms of what their thoughts are, what they might be thinking. Uh and last, yeah, building mysteries will be providing more detailed information regarding the schools and if your celebrations and graduation. Uh if you have any questions, please contact your child or children's building administrator. Uh there is one thing I I I don't know if I touched upon, I just wanna make sure that um it was in here or not. So it must be so I spoke with the Department of Health the other day and it didn't make it in here, but uh guests from other schools are allowed according to the uh the field trip and end of year trip guidance. Uh so it's something which, you know, they were talking about as we look at winter sports, spring sports, things along those lines, that's uh if a student from one of our schools would like to bring uh say someone from Fairhaven or Mill River or Otter Valley, that according to the uh Department of Health guidance, that that would be allowed. Um so I just wanted to kind of clarify that, cause I know that was a concern from uh some of our parents and as well as some staff members. Alright, and that's really it in terms of the overall guidance. Uh any, I'm sure we'll have some questions, some discussion on this.
So I think if maybe the next thing we could do is go through, let's go through uh building by building and hear what the proposals are from each building and then we'll take questions after if that's okay. Alright, so we'll start, I'll start with uh Christie's the first one to pop on my screen, so I'll start with her.
Um yeah, elementary is probably much easier than high school, so um we are, so do you want to do field trips or just our promotion ceremony, Lisa? Or what, what do you guys want?
Uh yeah, I think talk about what you have planned for end of year. So ceremony, um end of year parties, kind of, kind of those kinds of things, probably with the exception of prom and dancing.
Okay, so uh May twenty first, sixth graders are taking a geology field trip. On um June seventh, we are going to have schoolwide field days down at the Proctor Youth Field. Um we've done this prior to COVID and we were able to socially distance and we'll have um tents set up for different grade levels and we'll, we have a lot of organized events. Um June tenth, we're gonna have a pool day for the fifth and sixth graders and years past, the whole school went over there, but we were able to have three separate days. So five, six will go over one day, three, four will go over one day, then K two will go over one day. Um so we're working with the pool folks, um the the pool director, I guess, um to make sure that we're able to socially distance and and follow all the guidelines on that. For sixth graders in the past, they've done a day trip to Boston. Um this year, we're looking to go to the Otter Creek Outdoor Center. Um we had looked into Killington, but they're not offering anything until July first, so I've been in contact with the folks at Otter Creek Outdoor Center. It's about twenty-two dollars a student and that will include um mini golf, an arcade, um uh bouncy houses unlimited, pizza, ice cream, soda, fries. Um and that's about twenty-two bucks a person. He's given us a really good deal with that. Um promotion, June fourteenth at six o'clock, it will be held behind Proctor Elementary School. We will be getting a tent that can house about a hundred people underneath it. We have um eighteen students, so just looking into how many students, um how many people each student can bring, we typically don't have much more than that in attendance. Um and that will be followed by a parade. Um we did that last year, it was really successful. It was one thing that families wanted us to bring back, so we will um make sure our parade route is similar with last year, um and that will be escorted by the uh fire department, the volunteer fire department. And June fifteenth will be the last day of school. So those are the events that we have planned for my building.
Okay, and just for clarification, since funding is a component, is there funding for the Otter Creek? Or is that something that you would be seeking funding for?
Um I'm going to have the um our P T L pay for it.
Okay, so is there anything transpiring at your school for end of the year that you need funding for?
Um I mean, if I can get funding, of course, so we don't have to tap out the P T L funds. Um busing for the Proctor Youth Field is what I, that's probably gonna be our most expensive thing, just because they're doing repair work um headed down to get to the Proctor Youth League, so it was advised that we don't necessarily walk. So we will have to get a um a bus, just to kind of shut uh shuttle folks back and forth in the morning and then for pickup. And that's going to be probably our most costly um part of our end of the year events.
Alright, and do you have an estimate on what that might be?
It's around three hundred and eighty dollars.
For the entire event?
Need for, um just for the busing.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, how about we move on to, I see Joe Harrington, so or you know what, I'm sorry, Joe, let's go to um Kristen, we'll do both elementary schools first.
Hi, everybody. My camera's off because of my wifi. I'm not trying to be rude at all. Uh what we have right now for our end of the year events, we are planning a field day with organized games. All classes, of course, will be in their self-contained pods. And we have a bounce house, it's not really a bounce house, it's a maze and a water slide. And we had met with Dr. Chick about all of this stuff and got it approved by him. Um we are trying to have an outdoor concert that will be on May twenty-eighth and we're going to try to combine it with Memorial Day, so we can, you know, bring, try to bring that tradition back. And then our advancement night is planned for June fourteenth at six o'clock, just like Christie's. And we're planning to have an outdoor ceremony with parents bringing their own lawn chairs, that kind of thing, and the kids set up six feet apart socially distanced, so.
Okay, and is there anything happening um with these events that require additional funding or do you have funding for these events?
We're all set.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Joe Harrington.
So I'll start with graduation. Um we are going to attempt, and I think we can do it, we are gonna have a very traditional graduation outside. Uh we have ordered a very large circus tent. Um that probably is about the same size as our gym, so I think we can do this. Um we will have the same staging, we'll have the same setup as we have had in the past, it will just be under a tent. Um we also will be doing our uh traditional class night, the night before, in the same space. Um, you know, obviously for both events, following all the the guidelines that will be set forth. One thing that we are adding this year, and we have moved the graduations from seven P M to six P M, cause we were a little concerned about lighting and sometimes our our ceremonies can they're they can be a little lengthy, so we have moved everything to six P M. Something that we are adding um this year after class night, the senior class is going to be doing a barbecue. And we are gonna do that barbecue on school property in our parking lot. So we're looking to see if we actually can get another tent, maybe a smaller tent, that we would put in the parking lot. And that would occur directly after class night. Um so that may be, if we can get it, that would be an extra expense for us. Um we are looking, the seniors have talked about doing a day trip. They are right now bouncing ideas around of what they they, you know, it's kind of limited, um but they're they are looking to figure out something they can do for the day uh in the state of Vermont, whether that's going up to Burlington Church Street, whatever it may be, they're they're bouncing ideas around now. I would say that probably will happen, but we're we're not sure exactly what it's gonna look like like yet. Um you know, this time of year, days are precious and there there are not a lot of days left in the school year, so also finding time to do these things are complicated. Um they do have money for that, uh because the seniors, you know, have been raising money for years, but because they were not able to raise money their senior year, um that may be something that may need to be uh helped with. Not fully paid for, but maybe helped with. We're, again, depending on what they do, where they go, we're not sure yet. Um we are putting, as far as prom goes, we are putting, we did, maybe that happened today, if it didn't happen today, it's happening very soon, a survey out to the high school kids to see if they even want to have a prom. Um, you know, and it under what all the the guidelines are, the the things that are in place that they can't do, they were not too enthused about having that, but I just did hear ten minutes ago, that they can have guests from another school. That could change their thinking. A lot of our kids date kids from other schools. Um or they date people who aren't in school anymore, who may have just graduated. So we will have to get that new information out to them because that could change their thinking about whether they want to have a prom or not, because that was a big sticking point for them. Um so we'll we'll have to, we'll look at that the next day or two. Um but we are gonna totally, it's gonna be the students' choice. If they want to have one, we will make it happen. If they don't want to have one, then then we don't have one. Um there are other various field trips that traditionally happen at the end of the year. A lot of times our our lower grades go down to the local rec park, we will have discussions about that. Um I would assume that's something they may want to continue. And again, if that does occur, um if they want to do that, then that may be some area, that may be an area too, because we haven't been able to fundraise for those different classes that they may need to some financial support for that also, which would not be a whole lot of money, you know, be buying maybe hot dogs and hamburgers and and things of that sort, but far from being a a huge expense. So what I could see right now is the ex- extra expenses could be that second tent. It could be um maybe paying for that graduation tent part of it. Um it could be supporting some of the the day trip um and maybe some of the barbecue. I don't have money or the amount of any of that right now, but it would be paying for, helping to pay for some of those things, I would imagine. That's all I got.
Okay, and when we start talking about um high school trips and things like that, I guess the we're talking about um expending their funds first before uh we supplement with funds.
Right, and that that was made very clear to the to the kids that 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 would be the case. You know, we would be looking to supplement the things that we need to do, like the tent and those kind of things, you know, that wouldn't necessarily ever be paid for by the class.
Absolutely, the tent, that that, those are, those are beyond class responsibilities, absolutely. Alright, moving on to um Joanne Proctor.
Sorry, sorry. Um so Proctor's graduation is June twelfth at ten A M in the morning. Uh we are planning to have a tent outside, have an outside graduation. Um we are looking to um rent that tent uh from the weekend before because it is the um plan of the junior class to have a a a dance. Uh what we're calling a summer dance or a dance party on uh June fifth instead of a prom. Um this would include students from nine through grade twelve and it would be held in the back of um Proctor High School uh butted up against the um the tennis courts. And we would have uh some catering. Um they would be looking for some funding around that because uh the junior class or the the fundraising has not, they don't feel that they've been able to be given an opportunity to make enough money to to support that. Uh we would have a D J. Um it would go from five to eight o'clock at night. Um we would have a number of probably five or six staff members in attendance. And um depending on what the board decides, whether we have outside guests or not. Um uh backing up from that, um the seniors also have a couple of ideas for a senior field trip, but given the uncertainty about the women's softball and uh men's uh um uh baseball team, we're not quite sure exactly, so they have been in contact with U V M uh to see if we can use the ropes course there. That would be a three hour ropes course um experience for our kids. And then they would go to Church Street and have a luncheon. Um at that point, uh another option would be to go to the trampoline park. To be honest, I don't really know where that is. I think it might be Williston, but it is an indoor experience. The same thing would hold true, that they would go to the indoor trampoline park and then have lunch on Church Street and come home. Um and then the third and final option, if necessary, would be to go to a state park, have a barbecue, a luncheon, and then return back to school. But again, they're not able to identify a date because they're worried about um all the final um uh sports team um situations. Um the seniors are also hoping to have a senior dinner. Um there are some names, uh locations that have been thrown around, uh like the Ham's Farm, other locations outside. Uh to be honest with you, I'm a little worried about that because I don't have relationships with the parents or the students to the extent that if I attended that event, which I would be expected to do, um I could monitor appropriately uh the social distancing, the um the organization of the of the food as well as, you know, the mask, you know, it would be very awkward for me to do that. So I would recommend that we have a senior banquet on campus so that I could attend and be responsible. It would be hard for me to do it otherwise, but, you know, I'm certainly open to that. Um we, uh other than the dance, the senior banquet and the field trip, we are looking at a um event for our uh sixth graders to come over and do a transition with our school and Christie and I are in negotiations about that. We don't really have a plan for that right now, we wouldn't need funding for it. Um but we'd like to hold true to the uh as much as we can, the traditions that have been held. Um we have also at the end of the year, um whatever, some of the, um sorry, what are the other activities? Uh as I said, we have graduation at ten o'clock in the morning on on the twelfth. I think I think that's about it. So we would be looking for the funding to support the senior activities. I do know that they do have some money in their accounts right now, but, you know, given um given the COVID situation, uh it would be open to the board helping in any way that they can. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry, I can't get unmute, it's like harder and harder every time to unmute. All right, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. So a lot of this stuff, for us at least, was kind of put on hold, because it was a wait-and-see type thing of what was going to happen. I mean, a lot of the stuff in the last 24 to 48 hours has just come up. Move-up day, Chris called me yesterday, said we could do a move-up day, I've already been in touch with Liz down at Wells, and I'm going to reach out to Rick and Kristen. Again, just finding a date where the kids can come up, obviously be separate days for the the different schools, but find days for those kids to come up to our building. Prom, we had talked about the prom right now. You know, I talked to the senior advisors last week, told them kind of put everything on hold till after tonight. One of the things we looked at, we reached out to Castleton, they have they have an atrium up there at Castleton that we could, you know, it's an outside, because we were looking at the outside place, and she said the weekend that we were looking at, the weekend of June 5th, they have it available. It's an outdoor thing, and they said, you know, they could put like two sides down, so it's kind of there. We've been in contact with the company for the tent for graduation and for prom, because the way the guy says he doesn't have enough help, he could, you know, would have to be like up for two weeks. You know, and he said, I wouldn't charge you for that type thing, but one of the issues we have right now is where to put it. Our baseball, you know, we talked about the sports teams and everything like that, you know, if we do it early, too early, it's on the baseball field, we got to check out the schedule for that. Even if we tried to put it down the elementary school, we got the fields down there as well, so that's something we need to look at, again, been in touch with those people about that. Same thing for graduation, we always plan for an outside graduation. In the past, we've gotten a trailer put down out there. And usually, it's the night before decision of do we set chairs up inside or outside. I don't know about, again, if the tent situation, trying to figure out location where we can put the tent, where it can stay up for a few weeks without, you know, being in the way of everything. You know, we could, either that or we just, you know, hope that we have great weather like we did last year. Ours is a Friday night, June 11th, that's 6:00. And that's what we're looking at. We have end of the year barbecue, we have talked about, talked to a couple of my staff about that, just in the past, we've gone to Lake St. Catherine State Park for that, this time we were talking, maybe just do something up at the high school for the kids, just do like an afternoon kind of field day type thing outside. Just toss that around, last, last week, we were talking about it. We're looking at our honors night, last year we did like a virtual honors night, we have a meeting set up for tomorrow to kind of discuss this. One of the things someone talked about this year too, is maybe do a live stream where the staff is there. And so the staff, we just don't have an audience in front of us, so we kind of do, instead of everyone recording their stuff, and we send out the recording, it's actually live and the staff is in there, but that's something we're working on too. And also our National Honor Society is, our Art National Honor Society is looking at an outdoor induction ceremony, and I know our National Honor Society is working on that as well. Trying to see what we can do for an outdoor ceremony with that. With that, I did touch base with Dr. Chick. If we don't have a tent, and it's raining on that day, and they're looking at, you know, there's seven kids in the National Art Honor Society, so with the parents in there, they're looking at less than 30 people in the, you know, it could be put in a gym inside with a social distancing piece, so. And we hadn't even talked about senior trip, when I meet with the senior class advisors later this week, that's something, you know, I be honest with you, I thought that was out of the question until, like you said earlier this week, that with the senior trip, because it was even just a day trip within the state, so. As far as funding goes, it all depends, you know, we got the tent, that's going to be an expense. You know, the prom, if we have to, we go up to Castleton, there's an expense there for the place up there. You know, of course busing, if we do anything else that requires us leaving the campus, that type of thing, so. That's about what we got right here, importantly, again, it was a lot of it was, we're putting stuff on hold, we didn't want to make too many plans, and just have everything. You know, we know last year, it was what, three days, four days for graduation, they changed the rules again, I know things are a lot looser this year than they were last year too, so. So we're just gonna, like, you know, like Joe said, not a lot of days to do it, and you know, same thing, trying to get everything in with sports and everything else, trying to get everything in, try to do it that way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board members about any of the principals' presentations or updates about end-of-year activities?
Yeah, I have one quick question, yes, thanks Lisa, actually for Joanne. When you were talking about, I definitely hear you on the senior dinner piece, and I I am leaning in alignment with you for sure. That being said, do you know if your schedule could allow such an event to occur in that window where that tent would be already on campus?
I think we could probably work that out, Seth. I, I, from what I remember, I think they were planning on the 6th of June to have the senior banquet, which I think is a Sunday. Yeah, it is. It's the day after the dance. So if we did it on campus, we could do it under the tent, that would work. But, you know, like, like I said, we're also, I mean, the kids are also worried about the fact that we are heading in, I mean, if anything happened during the week, we're heading into the finals, right? And so they really didn't want to schedule anything like the senior class trip or even the banquet to be in conflict with that, but if we did it on the 6th, that would not be a conflict.
Thank you, and one, actually, random follow-up, and maybe Chris is the one for this. Should, let's just use that example with Joanne for a minute, and let's think that maybe over the course of a week, there could potentially be three separate events occurring under that tent. If, is there a possibility for those plans to get derailed if there's something like a, a case that arrives in the attendees that have been there, despite all of the precautions and guidance?
Seth, that's been kind of what we've been dealing with all year, any time, anything can get derailed, and I think that's just something we have to be aware of, is just the flexibility. Like I said, we are cramming a lot in at the end of the year, it always happens in a normal year, but this year, like I said, if there was a positive case, which, you know, could happen, we would go through contact tracing, and we would have to, you know, potentially look at shutting down or rescheduling a banquet as a result, that's just the reality of this year, so. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So there are a couple of things then, that as a board, we need to have some level of consensus on, that Chris has hit on, and Seth just did, about with respect to activities, the comfort level of having them off-property, on-property, so how, how would the board like to proceed with that? I mean, with field trips, I think that the field trips, I'm just going to say that, that we have have been described, I didn't see anything that was largely questionable like that. I guess I'm talking more about prom, banquets, those kinds of things, and the feeling of the board. Because tonight is the night that we're meeting to give guidance to our administrators, so that they can go forward, and information can be sent out to not just graduates, but parents and, and those that are going to be coming in for other activities, so there's some decision-making that needs to happen tonight.
Well, I, I think the kids should be able to go off-campus for field trips, proms, whatever the guidance allows.
Okay. And what you're feeling, if building administrators are recommending comfort level oversight, we're responsible for the oversight of the guidance, are we going to support our building administrators?
Absolutely.
Okay. So currently, I think it appears that two are asking, so Joanne is saying her preference would be to stay on school property. And then Joe. Have Joe D., sorry, too, too many Kristins, too many Joes in these meetings. Have they already reserved the space for prom?
No, I just reached out to Castleton because of the outside piece of it. Like I said, we're not sure about getting a tent on our property, someplace where it's not going to be in the way. We either take up a ballfield, or we take up a parking lot, that's about what we got for if we have a large, Joe, what's yours, like 80 by 40 or something like that?
Yes, exactly, 80 by 40.
Yeah, because we called up there and to see, so it would be an 80 by 40 tent, so again, it's just location, 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 so we're looking, I did call Castleton just to put a feeler in there, and they are open that weekend, they're willing to work with us, give us a nice discount for going in there, so, you know, they said that was open, you could use the bathrooms right there in the stadium type thing, we've always gone off-campus with our proms. Again, just trying to find a spot, trying to think ahead, try to find an area where we can be outside, and if it did rain, we don't have to cancel everything, and they could still kind of have a good time and stay dry, so.
So can I just provide some clarification as well? I think if we look at the proms from a field trip perspective, when we went through the guidance, the guidance strongly discourages indoor field trips, there, you know, obviously there's a lot of caveats with that, but outdoor field trips are fun, I look at, there is a difference between Proctor's request and Joe's request, well, Joe is looking at an outdoor space under an atrium where, under field trip guidance would be generally allowable, while Joanne's would be more of an indoor, where it's not preferred, but if it were necessary, there are certain provisions that would have to be taken into place, so I think it's as we look at those two different scenarios, it kind of fits with the field trip guidance that I kind of outlined earlier.
So actually, to clarify, and just what you were just saying, Chris, Joanne, the request for that out or off-site dinner, maybe at a farm, for example, that was to be inside, potentially? Okay.
Oh, okay, I, I thought it was in like the barn area, or whatever, so, okay.
So, Joanne mute. Joanne, unfortunately, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I, I don't know, that's a really good question, I assumed, which is not very good of me, that because it was a farm, it was going to be outside, maybe somebody else has other information, but I thought it was an outside event, but I don't, I don't know. I mean, if we make a decision, then only outside events are, you know, approvable, I mean, I would, I would hold to that, but as you know, my other issue is really trying to monitor that, whether it's outside or inside, because I'm, I'm a new administrator, I wish I knew the families better than I do and the kids, but I don't, I've only been here since December. And for me to monitor and, you know, tell people to distance and wear masks on a, on a, on a campus, that I don't know the family or the people, it really puts me in a very difficult situation, so that, that is something that I have a concern about.
Yeah, I guess my thought process there would be that if, let me just give you the whole, my whole overarching spiel, I think as we look at field trips, sort of things, et cetera, when we're talking about one singular class, if that ends up being at a facility that's something like indoors, and I forget, for example, a trampoline park was mentioned.
I think that's indoors, I do think that is an indoor thing.
And so if there's some indoor stuff, the way I'm thinking is that if we're talking about a single class, that's basically a pod that already exists, that I personally wouldn't have too many concerns with that. But if we're talking about something like a prom, that's going to start to swell and be, be quite a bit bigger, I get, I get more nervous about that as well, so. I think maybe the size could kind of help to dictate that a little bit as well, and then just, I kind of feel like if we're going to, if we're going to utilize an outside space, that we, I guess I'll just say that we, as the, you know, the school, or maybe even the towns, we don't have some jurisdiction over, I think that they should be at a, like a professional sort of setting that where, you know, such as Castleton, or such as these other places, where basically we're dealing with people who provide spaces as their business, and I, I would not support full school sanctioned activities, let's say, at a private residence, for an example.
Okay.
So, sorry, I'll just put my two cents, Lisa, really quick, I would, I would you know, support what others have said, I, I think I'm more inclined to support administrators and their comfort level. You know, Joanne, you made some really, you know, you made a really good point in terms of what your experiences have been briefly, since you've been here. You know, Joe D., you have, you know Castleton, and, you know, it's very local, and it's a, you know, I've the pavilion's, you know, pretty much hardly used at all right now, over there, it's pretty deserted. There's parking, you can easily get out of the rain if you need to, et cetera, so. Anyway, I would say if it's outdoors, and it like Seth said, it's, it's sort of a contained field trip, not involving outsider people, outside of our school people, then I'm totally in support of that, or an indoor event, that's just a small number of our students. If it's like a prom where other guests are allowed, sort of non, you know, not our own school guests are allowed, if it's outdoors, I'd be much more inclined to support that, just so that yeah, we have a little bit more control over sort of, especially when we don't have a process yet for how we're going to do the attestation form of who's vaccinated, who's not, I, you know, that's going to be another challenge, and if you're not, if you're doing an outdoor event, and people can sort of enter at any point, you know, we're going to have to think about how we do that versus an indoor place, like a trampoline park, there's an entrance, and you would, someone would have to be there with the forms or whatever. So those kinds of things, the feasibility of that has to be considered too, so. But, you know, I'm, I am inclined to support our administrators and what they think will be the most fun for kids, given all the stuff we have to deal with, so, and the protocols we have to deal with.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we, we would encourage to stay on, on property, but if administrators feel that, that it is a feasible event to travel off, and that they can oversee and fulfill the responsibilities of the guidance, that as a board, we will support their decisions.
Did we want to include outdoors in that as well, Lisa?
Outdoors. I, I mean, are you looking for us to make a motion? That was just kind of my, like, my summary of everybody.
No, I, I think really we're just, so we're just, you know, getting guidance for it as we move forward, just so you, we're all on the same page as we build the plans out, so. And we could have a more, we could have a more detailed or updated on the 17th, when we meet again.
Absolutely, who knows, we'll maybe be under different rules by them. And then I think the, the big piece tonight, and this is probably more for graduating classes, but we need to determine how we're going to, the, the numbers we're going to allow, are we going to give, let's say, 15 tickets to each graduate? Because we're, we're saying that graduate families are going to be sitting in pods. So we need to have some way of, of determining that number. So what are your thoughts on that? And, and how about Joe, and Joe, and Joanne, just give us, I think, numbers, what do you, Joe D., about 40 kids? And, and how about Joe and Joe and Joanne, just give us, I think, uh, numbers. What are you, Joe D.? About forty kids?
We're uh, around thirty, just like thirty, thirty-two maybe.
Okay, and Joey, what are you?
Oh, I should know the answer to that. Um. Um, I, I think we're probably around twenty-five-ish.
Okay. And Joanne, about the same, twenty-five-ish?
You, you, you can correct me, Lisa, but I think it's about twenty-two.
Okay. All right, just, I'm just giving that as an idea to board members when we're talking about if you're giving fifteen tickets. Um, and granted, not every kid is gonna bring fifteen people. But I think from a, a planning perspective. Um, we need to, we need to have an idea about that. So what's, what's the thought of the board? Too high, too low?
Um, the thing that I, I guess that the only concern. That I would have. I can't, and, and I'm so sorry that I don't specifically remember all those numbers, but was it nine hundred in an outside? Uh, so, you know.
Seth, it's nine hundred plus any number of unvaccinated or vaccinated people, so. That's nine hundred unvaccinated, then you can have as many vaccinated people as you want.
And sorry, one more quick, quick clarifier. A tent with, uh, let's say two walls only. That's outdoors, or, or let's just say a tent with no walls. Is that considered completely outdoors, or is that? All right. Then forget what I was, sorry to say my calculations seem irrelevant uh, based on. That gigantic amount of, of allowance. And my only other question would be. Um, you know, do we do something like a fixed number, or, or sorry, uh. Students, tell us of who your immediate fa- ma- family members are, so. Uh, parents, stepparents, grandparents, siblings, and basically we will accommodate and then you get four tickets. For people of your choice. Yes, Joe?
So what's complicated about this is we're outdoors, right? And we cannot police the whole grounds. Um, you know, we're gonna have a tent down near our soccer field, but that doesn't mean people can't watch graduation from the playground or up on. Poison Ivy Hill or, or wherever from the cemetery, right? So, um, the. The ticket thing is going to work for the people that we want to be in, the family members who are going to be inside the tent. You know, in the chairs, watching, but we're also potentially gonna have a lot of people, just people who like to go to graduations. Graduation crashers who are going to, you know, um, potentially watch from afar, which, you know, what. Which is hard to predict what that's gonna look like, right?
Right, and so I think that at this point. We have to be concerned about the graduates and their families. I think that, that, that's our focus and. It's just like here, last year when we said it was only graduates. Families that could fit in the, I don't know, three cars or whatever we did last year with cars. We still had people lined up on Olympus. You had people sitting over at the rink and we're still going to have that. But I think for people to be on the field in front of the graduates, under the tent. That, that is the group that we need to be um concerned about this evening. We're not going to be able, and we could. I mean, here in Proctor, I think we could designate an area for students or something like that and. Or, or whatever, and I'm sure you can in other schools also. But I think our first priority this year has to be um, this, the graduates. And making sure that their um, families, loved ones are um, coming.
So we have to know how many chairs we actually. We have to know how many chairs we actually can fit in that tent. We have to figure out exactly what the numbers are, and we have to break down. The, how many tickets, so it's gonna, I would imagine it's gonna look different for each school. What we allow may be very different than what. Polteny allows, um. It's gonna be based on the space and the number of kids. So is it okay to have different members?
Problem asking? I mean, would it be a problem surveying each family to see? What the estimated number of family members might be? So that we can plan for that?
You're gonna have some people that are gonna come back and they're gonna wanna bring twenty people. And someone else is gonna bring four.
We, we had uh, the Rutland County Principals met this morning at Spur on uh, with Stafford and they, you know, we kind of tossed this around and. We were like, what's everybody doing? I know some of them were just like five tickets per family and. If you're only bringing two people, I can't give my three tickets to Kristen because she wants to bring eight. It was, no, you get five tickets per family. Um, aga- again, I think for us, what I'm thinking right now is just if we do the tent. Like Joe said, how many people can we fit in there? How many chairs with the staging can we get in there for um, families? Uh, a- and go from there. I, I will say we have a, we have it last year, we had it this year too. We have a set of twins. And we said X amount per family, not per student, so it was. Um, you know, it wasn't like, well, you got two twins, you can get ten tickets there instead of, uh, we just said per family.
And that doesn't mean that other family members can't watch that graduation from outside the tent.
Right, right, and that's what one of those school, other schools were saying is like, we had tickets for inside the tent and then people, if they wanna be outside. They can stand outside and watch, and if it's raining, bring an umbrella type thing, so.
Right, so. People have to sit in their pods though. That's, that's the key part about this at graduation. So in Proctor, we had said we weren't setting out chairs, that we were making people bring their own chairs. Um, and I think that seems like a smart thing to do.
Save some money too.
Yeah. I mean, if you're coming and it's an outdoor event, I mean, people have outdoor chairs and then we said we would have. Some chairs available, but I just think that that's easier for people to set in their pods also, so. Um. I, I think we need to set a number and I think we need to be consistent with the number across all three schools. I think once we. Start doing different numbers at different schools, that's where issues arise. So. I, I would like us to make that decision this evening. And I'm welcome to suggestions. But I think that's a decision that needs to be made so information can get out.
So what was a traditionally uh, accepted, widely accepted number?
So we've had, you know, Grant, we've had as many as, wow. Uh, it's hard to say, three, four, five hundred people in our gym. You know, depending on the class, it's, the gym is packed graduation night. Uh. You know, we have the bleachers out, we have our chairs in the gym floor, then we have the whole row. Large, like, your large section of bleachers out that are filled, the floors filled.
But is that, with that, that was the general population, correct? That was not strictly a family, so. So were we in a situation before where each school was giving, let's say, this thing of family tickets?
No, we never, we never did that. We've never done that. They, they weren't allowed to reserve seats, so if you came with fifteen family members, you waited in line until the door opened and you picked your. Fifteen seats and uh, some families came with two or three, you know, it was. We have split families and, you know, Brady Bunch families and. So that's the problem. If you go as small as five tickets is, that potentially could cause a lot of problems and. So I would, I would suggest somewhere between seven and ten would seem reasonable to me.
We used to, when we had an inside, when I first started, before we did the outside ones, they would give ten tickets per family so they could sit on the floor. And then if they wanted to bring extra people, they could sit up in the bleachers, but we always had plenty of room in the chairs as well, so. I, I, I agree with you, Joe. I think seven to ten's a good number. Um. You know. We're, we're looking at, like, uh, my school's got, we'll just say for even sakes, thirty kids. You know, so you're looking at three hundred tickets. Actually, you know. I got two sets of twins graduating this year, so you're talking two hundred and eighty tickets, but uh, um. You know, if you look at it that way, uh.
I think we could accommodate ten. Boy, it's so hard to know without that tent being set up out there. Again, again, if it. We could spread beyond that if we need to, if it's a nice night. What's going to put a, what's gonna be difficult is if this is not a nice night.
Right.
It's just gonna be.
And, yeah, you know, and we can certainly, that, that, that. I mean, we can calculate. Estimates on those numbers very, very, very quickly, once we know the rough area of the, uh, of the stage and how much. Sort of space in between the crowd and there and how much space you wanna do that, so that, that's a pretty easy calculation. Um, we can make, but was there a consistent, I, I, and I, I don't also remember the sizes of tents everybody was mentioning. Um, was that fairly consistent or not necessarily?
I think Joe, uh, Polteny's and West Rutland's is similar in size. I don't.
What, what was, what was, what was Proctor?
I do believe last year's like a forty by forty tent.
We called West Rutland to see what they had for their size of the tent, cuz Jay had said it was like the size of a basketball court, so. And we just got the same size. We, we have, we've talked to people.
Do you ever, do you recall what those dimensions were?
Forty by eighty.
Forty by eighty, okay, okay. You guys keep chatting, I'm gonna look at that really quick.
All right, and so I don't know if anybody else saw, but Christie said in the chat, the most she could do is five tickets per family. For hers. And I go, um, Chris, what?
Tent is going to be set up on our back playground and it's to hold a hundred people, and if we have to socially distance them. Um, you know, if it's a nice night, people can stand outside of it, but I, I know we couldn't accommodate more than that.
Do we have a different number for sixth grade versus, I mean, I don't know how many kids in the sixth grade sort of ceremonies versus.
Appropriate for sure to have a smaller number, definitely. Um, we have nineteen students in sixth grade this year. Um, but, I'm not. Having five tickets each under the tent is still going to be very tight. I just don't have the space either because it's going to be on my playground. We're having it actually set up for, you know. An extended period of time just for shaving as well. So I think, um, they said it could have a hundred people underneath. No walls on it.
So what we could do is just say have a max number and then if, when you actually get the tent. Of, you know, agreed upon and you know the exact dimensions of what, which tent you're actually getting. You could then decrease from there if you needed to, but I would say no more than. Than ten and then for sixth grade, you know, you're, we're just gonna have to do it by the size of the space that we have and that's just the, the, where we are. In the world right now, you know? Um, we have to have classroom space and all of that too, so, you, you know, I mean, it's just like anything else. We're, we're limited by guidance and we're limited by safety and all of that, so if you can't get a tent, it's, you know. On a property of, as certain size and we're just gonna have to limit the number that way. I'm, you know, a- and I don't know if we can. Hundred percent decide that at this moment, if we don't even know what the tents, uh, exact tent sizes are gonna be yet.
And again, we're not turning people away from graduation either. I kind of look at this like we did soccer games, you know, we had. Uh, area that allowed a hundred and fifty people, but that doesn't mean you couldn't watch the game from. You know, outside of the viewing area, so. If you want to bring fifteen family members, you can bring fifteen family members. They just aren't gonna be able to watch graduation. From maybe fifty feet away, they might be a hundred feet away. But they're still gonna be allowed to be there.
So, yeah, sorry, I, I just crushed, crunched some numbers, um. Really quickly and, and, and listen, just doing some Google search, right, about generally accepted square footage for public seating. Um, ha- handful of different things, table seating is twenty-five square feet per seat, study corral, thirty square feet. Yada, yada. Um, and let's think about that real quick too, right? So thirty square feet would simply be five by six. Right? So, and, and maybe that sounds a lot for, for sitting there, but it's not a whole lot of space when you talk about leg space, feet, et cetera. Uh, any sort of social distancing, so really quickly, right, and so the forty by forty, if we use that forty by forty tent example. Um, that's sixteen hundred square feet and that's sixteen hundred square feet for the entire tent, which should include. Uh, the stage, et cetera, but if we only divide that by thirty for, um. You know, if it was thirty square feet per seat, we can only seat fifty-three. In that.
Yeah, but uh, graduates won't be under the same tent. Are they? Our graduates aren't.
So I, I think we need to kind of scale back what we're, we're thinking about these tents. We're not gonna be able to get these large. Like Barnum and Bailey circus tents, you know, where we can, you know, so really. Realistically, I think we'll have like a, a stage, we may be able to get graduates, but like last year, we. We had people fanned out across the, the field and everyone was able to see. I mean, we'll have to have rain dates, we'll have to, and the, last year we. At Proctor, we had to delay things a little bit because a storm came through and just went just south and we. We were very lucky, but, you know, we, we were going back and forth the whole night about what we need to do, but. I think regardless of the size, we really have to take a look at that. One, not everyone's gonna be under the tent. We, we know that and. Uh, nor should we try to limit that. I, I think. You know, really, if we look at, you know, I say, you know, ten tickets per family, I think every. Every building minister would have to kind of, will be able to accommodate that. Um, and, and find a way, it's just, it's, you know, if it rains, it's going to change, but I think we have to have a rain date. Uh, you know, on hand and just let people know that it is weather dependent, just as it was last year and. Um, people, you know, and there'll be some people, they'll, they'll sit in for a soccer game, for a baseball game in the rain. Uh, you know, I bet they'd sit out for graduation in the rain too, but. Not to say that, I, I would encourage that, but just saying.
So how does that sound? Ten tickets per graduate and five tickets for sixth grade?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I support that.
Can I just ask a question? So we're not using the tent at the elementary school. We're either going to do it on the. Uh, open front circle or move it out back, so that would give us unlimited space. So does that mean we can still only offer five tickets as well?
Well, you still have to be following the guidance. They still have to be in pods. They still have to be socially distanced. So how are you, you still need to delineate the area where they're going to be. I, I mean, I think that you need to have a number so that specifically for your graduates. And then, like Joe said, others can come.
Um, Kristen, are you having chairs set up in a certain designated area for, for specifically for, you know, I don't know, elderly folks? And or where the graduates are gonna be? Are they standing? What's your, how are you thinking about the design for that?
The design is that the graduates that, or the ones advancing, excuse me, would be sitting six feet apart. And then the families are being asked to bring camp chairs, lawn chairs and set up in their own pods. So, you know, the, we have a large area in the back of the school. Where we can still access the sound system and everything like that, so we would be able to. I mean, I'm not saying that there's going to be more than five per every child, but I just. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I, I think that we have to have some level of continuity here across our buildings, um. So that, that, that's my feeling. And it's not saying that other people can't come, it's saying those that. I, I think particularly this year, those that are going to be up front and witnessing the graduation should be. The immediate families, in my opinion. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
And this is, oh, sorry, Kristen.
No, I was just gonna ask how many um, sixth graders are advancing approximately, Kristen C.?
Think twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We just got a, a new one yesterday, so.
I, I was just wondering, um, sorry, if. If it would be helpful to delineate like the space and that would be the five tickets. You know, whether it's just like a roped off area, so it was kind of priority seating for those five tickets. And then outside of that, you can bring your camp chairs and sit outside of, out of kind of like a roped off area. As long as it didn't take away from the attractiveness of the event, I guess, but. That might be a way to keep it consistent, but then people think they can come, so.
So just, I'm coming back to the. So, just, I'm coming back to the, to the calculation. With those tent sizes, I, I can't agree to five tickets per student because they will never, ever uh, make it in there, and I guess it depends on what the messaging is. You know, if we're, if we're sending a message that, yeah, you're gonna get five tickets so your family can sit in a tent, and then we get there and literally one-fifth of the people, uh, could fit in there, I mean, obviously, we're gonna figure this out sooner if we're setting up chairs, um, and just while we're sitting here, um, I threw a couple chairs in my kitchen, side by side, kitchen chairs, side by side, you know, butted up, similar to like what I'm used to seeing in a gym, et cetera. I measured it out and I got to about nine square feet per, right? Um, but sixteen hundred divided by nine is still one seventy-seven, and that is banking on the full forty by forty being used uh, for seating, so I'm concerned.
Uh, I, I would say our, our goal is really should be get the graduates under the tent. You know, if we can just find a way to get the graduates on a tent, and we, you know, like I said, if we, if we have space for our families to sit outside of the tent, I know what, once you get the stage in there, the stage takes up a lot of space and it, it shrinks pretty quickly, and if we even look at graduates, uh, if they're gonna be sitting close to one another, we do, we should still try to do some physical distancing, uh, you know, with our, you know, with them there, so I, I just think we're, we're focused, trying to get everybody, like I said, in this tent, and I'm just going from last year just at Proctor where, you know, we had a nice day and we had all this room, all this green space for families, and there were families who were, you know, sitting behind cars who could still see just fine, we had a good sound system, and it was a nice day, it was, you know, everyone you know, people were on the, the fence, you know, about a hundred yards away, and we're still able to participate, we were able to do everything, so I just, I, I know we're, we're kind of stuck in just the idea of just the tent and how many people, you know, we, we get under a tent, but really, it's like when you put the stage in there and the stage will have to be, you know, with some risers, i- it is going to take up some space, and if we look at really just committing to graduates and you know, if it's pouring down rain anyways, I think we have to really look at a rain date. Just, so.
All right, with, with that, if it's only for the students, then, then honestly, I'm gonna support any number between five and ten.
Because I think no matter what number we look at, Seth, I think we're, we're gonna have a problem where somebody's gonna be upset because they don't get in the tent. And it's gonna be first come, first served. I know at Proctor, you'll have ten family members right, right there at the gate and they'll just line up, it's, it's no different than what it was at church, you know, people run in to get the first view and you know, all of a sudden you're stuck in the corner, you know, it's like, well, you know, so it's just, it, it's the same sort of thing, and, and that's okay, but I, I think it's, yeah, we really just, we have seating, we have space, we have, uh, you know, like I said, if it's a, it's a terrible day, then we just have a rain date planned.
I, I just think the key for the, for the tickets is that it's graduates' families that are getting in, um, I don't know, as Kristen, um, Whitman said, the priority seating. That it isn't someone who just likes to attend every single graduation that is at the front row. I think, I think that's the purpose at this point.
Can we? Um, that we'll have a tent for the graduates, family will be set up in pods, we can accommodate for me no more than five people per, um, student, five family members per student under the tent. Others are welcome, but they just can't be under the tent necessarily.
Then I think you're gonna have to delineate an area where they can be.
Yes, for sure.
So how, how do building administrators feel about that? So each graduate would get ten tickets and then you would have another space delineated behind, let's say, behind the caution tape where other people could come and watch, but from that space forward to the graduates would be for um, graduate families. Or those that have a ticket.
Priority seating.
Priority seating, VIP.
Yeah, VIP.
Yes, no?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I thought you were asking the admins, but yeah, good for me.
Okay, good for you. Some of the, some of the senior classes have, have money. I think what, Polkney has about eleven thousand, Proctor has about nine something, West Rutland has what?
So Polkney has eleven thousand, twenty-one dollars, Proctor has nine thousand, seven hundred, forty-one dollars, and West Rutland has five thousand, two hundred, thirty-one dollars.
So I just wanted to be clear about funding when we talk about class trips or things like that, that those class funds should be expended first prior to any supplemental funding coming from the board. With respect to the tents, um, I think those are responsibilities of for us to, to, um, provide for this year. Thoughts from the board?
I support that, that sounds good, um. You know, if it's something we can help with, just because student classes didn't have, you know, last year or this year necessarily to be able to do the fundraising that they had hoped that they would need. Um, I'm all for supporting that, um, but if they do have money in their um, accounts, then I think it should go towards their events.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll support that too.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good.
Great. Thank you, Seth. Kristen Whitman?
Sorry, it took me a minute. I support that.
Okay, and then, um, I think just the second piece, and I realize at this point it doesn't sound like it may be only one school's having prom, but I would also hope that from the year we've come from and, and some of the difficulties that our families have had, that we, if schools were having proms, we would not be ticketing them, um, the way we had in the past. I know here maybe it might cost eighty dollars to go to prom or something like that. So I, I, I think that those things need to be taken into consideration. Um, and I know if you're, if Polkney's gonna have it offside, it's gonna cost some money to do that, but I also think that we have to be conscientious and try to be inclusive of everyone this year, and eighty dollars or fifty dollars may be the reason someone can't attend prom, and, uh, just, just my thoughts.
Do we have a way that we could subsidize that, Joe, or anybody who's, you know, in case that cost goes up a little bit, e- either because of transportation or?
We, we've talked about that, we have some fun, you know, if you guys wanna give us some money, we'll take it, but we have some funds internally that we, we already said that we would, uh, you know, if it came to having to rent the place, the school's gonna take care of it, not the kids. We're gonna try to keep the tickets as low as possible. Um, just because of everything else. I mean, if we can get them to go for free and we can fund the whole thing, that'd be great, but, um, you know, no, they're not gonna have eighty dollar tickets like they have in the past, you know, we could, you know.
And, and maybe when we meet on the seventeenth, you'll have a better idea of.
We can add some numbers then, so.
Okay, and I think that, that would be helpful. Joanne?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, that was a concern of the junior class because it's, it's going to be at grade nine through twelve and, uh, the junior class, because we haven't had a chance to really fundraise, and they don't want this to deplete, you know, you know, any of the, um, the funds that they have currently in their, um, you know, in their account, so if the board could help out with that, I could get more information between now and the seventeenth, but that definitely is a concern of the students, that they don't want this to be a hardship on any of the classes given where we're at.
Okay, and I, and I think that, that certainly, that certainly makes sense, and, and if building administrators could come back then on the seventeenth with events that would need, um, help, funding help, and we could discuss that.
Okay, be happy to.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else? Any other questions, comments, Kristen Ross?
Yeah, I just wanna, can I share my screen if, if it'll let me? Chris, I don't know if it'll let me since I'm not you, but.
You should be able to.
Okay, let me just try this, um. I haven't done this in Google, I don't know if you'll be able to see this, but this is supposed to be for the teachers. So I don't know if you can see my writing or not when this pops up, but.
We can see it.
Thank you to all the teachers. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week this week. We love what you do, we wanna support you and you know, hang in there, this has been a really tough time for everyone, but especially on your shoulders, you've been carrying a lot, so we just want you to know that we appreciate all that you're doing and continue to do.
Kristen, that's awesome. Thank you so much. The teachers really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, anything else? All right, I think we made, you know, I, I, I appreciate all the work that.
We have somebody with their hand up, I think Marissa Holcomb. Raise her hand.
I'm sorry, sure, go ahead.
Sorry, it's actually your mother, Tammy. For some reason, it comes under her name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, that's okay, you don't know. Uh, so I just have a couple of points I wanted to just clear, make sure I'm understanding with the proms. So, did we decide, did I hear you guys say that you're okay with, um, inviting outside, kids outside of the school to the proms, so that if, uh, one of the kids wanted to invite a Polkney kid wanted to invite somebody from Fairhaven or West Rutland or wherever, that that's gonna be allowed, or does it have to be within the same school?
No, that would be allowed, but they'd have to go through the same process, and I'm assuming each building does the same, just like we do here, there's a a form to be filled out, it has to be sent, uh, back to that school, signed by that building administrator and forwarded to the building. If it was for the prom at Polkney, you would have to come back to Joe to show that that student is a student in good standing.
Okay, and, uh, my, my just fear is we need to figure out dates soon. Uh, a lot of these kids have jobs that they need to ask for those days off. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping it's not the seventeenth, you guys are asking to have your date set, because that's just kind of way too close for these kids, especially kids that have to get dresses and tuxes and everything else, so.
And we're looking at, it's probably gonna be the week of, the first weekend in June, so the fourth, fifth, um, again, depending on the sports and that type of stuff, what day it's on, but, uh, we're gonna meet with, um, Dave tomorrow and try to shore up a date, but yeah, we can't do anything within the next couple of weeks, that's why we looked at that date.
Proctor too.
So we're not gonna know any, what date the dance actually is for two weeks?
No, I said, well, we're not doing anything for the next two, it's gonna be the weekend of the fifth or fourth or fifth, I don't know if it's gonna be a Friday or Saturday, but it's gonna be that weekend.
Okay, well, that does make a difference with work, so we just needed to figure it out. Um, and my only suggestion.
You'll be the first, I know, Tammy.
Thank you there. Um, but my other suggestion is if we do have it under a tent in a field that we rent a dance floor as well for the prom, because as you, you might not know this, Joe, but with high heels, that isn't, doesn't work well for dancing. So just a thought.
So if you're a Polkney person, Joe's talking about, they're talking about having it in the atrium.
Yes, I know, but in the event, it changes.
We, we've talked about that, I talked, some of the senior girls came and talked to me way back in February. Um, and that's some of the stuff we talked about, um. So, yeah, we're gonna, I've already talked to Robin, we're gonna set up a, you know, between tomorrow or Thursday, we're gonna try to have a lot of stuff in place by the end of this week, so.
Perfect. And in, as far as, um, grand marches, are we still gonna be allowed to do those?
Like, uh, the lockdown type thing?
Lockdowns, yes, the lockdowns.
We're gonna see what we can do, and out, again, that might be weather permitting, but see if we can do an outdoor thing with that.
Okay, because by that, if it's June, so I guess I'm not understanding what the the big issue is with indoors on some of these things, because as of June first, you can have up to three hundred people inside. Then that's just unvaccinated. So even if we had to move a march inside, I, I don't foresee having more than three hundred people inside.
So Tammy, the issue is right now, one, identifying who is vaccinated, who's not unvaccinated. Uh, so you have one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet. So once we identify that, so just the logistics of finding, so we have been advised by the state to have as many things outdoors as possible, just because the, the logistics of dealing with vaccinated, unvaccinated individuals and square footage, so that's why we're moving things outside, so.
Do they have to actually be spread out themselves? Like, the unvaccinated people have to be spread out themselves, you mean?
According to the, the guidance, you have, you know, if an indoor event, you have one unvaccinated person per fifty square feet. So we would have to figure what that would look like, and that's why I think they're advising us to outdoor events are preferred because it, it changes the restrictions and the guidance.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
All right, are there, were there any other questions, comments? All right, um, I appreciate the time building administrators and Chris have put in on this, I know this is in, with everything else going on, this is time consuming, um, and if we could just come back on the seventeenth with the, um, funding components, by no means, when I said coming back on the seventeenth, did that mean waiting till that time to set dates or anything like that. I'm talking more about, um, the funding piece. Um, and I think, you know, even at this point, you could start sending out, um, guidance to uh, graduates and, and families to allow them to know that it's, you know, five tickets or, or ten tickets, so people can start to make those kinds of plans. All right?
Lisa, um, we have someone with their hand up, Alina, raise your hand.
Okay, Alina?
Hi, um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm one of the junior class advisors at Proctor. Um, we had put together a proposal that we gave to Joanne, and we would love to start making phone calls and booking some of the vendors. Um, is that something we can go ahead and start doing at this point? That, that was just my, kind of my big question, between now and the seventeenth, can we start, um, actually going ahead and scheduling uh, the vendors, or should we wait until the seventeenth to do that?
No, you can, you can start scheduling, just work with Joanne.
Okay, okay, I just wasn't sure because of the, if the funding piece wasn't gonna be decided till later, I wanted to make sure that we're gonna stay within whatever budget we're allowed to use.
Yeah, I would work, work with Joanne, I think, I will work closely, and if there's an issue, we'll, we'll address that, okay? I mean.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for giving up another evening, and, uh, I will see you on the seventeenth, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
I'll second.
I will take your vote by your signing off. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Chris, I made some notes too, so I don't know if you'll need them, if you're gonna give the recording to